Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the notice of council meeting. You are here by some intended a meeting of the town council to be held in the main hall, Hemsworth Town Council Community Centre, Bulling Shore Road, Hemsworth, commencing at 7pm on Thursday 18th of August 2022 for the purpose of transacting the following business. Can I just ask if everybody's switched the phone off or put it on silent? I'd be much obliged. Item number one, chairman's statement. I'm not making a statement at this time. I might make, I might speak after the public's vote. So we'll move on to item two, apologies for absence, to receive apologies for absence and to consider the and approve the reasons for absence.
Counselor, make your mind up.
Item three, declarations of interest. Council should disclose pecuniary or non pecuniary interests in any items on this agenda. Item four, public question time, to receive questions from members of the public.
That budget feels.
Yeah.
I'd like to just ask you all the community, sorry. Counselors, we've got lots of community groups in Hemsworth, so what we tire on. One is the play group, one is the Head of the Food Bank. And I'd just like to ask the councillors if they're involved with any of the community groups. Because since I've been around the food bank for two and a half years, I've not had a visit, an email or a telephone call asking us if we need anything, if we're alright or just anything. So I'd just like to add that sharing it on social media, and I know we've got three councillors here that represent Hemsworth, are all on social media, and just not been shared, well, it's been shared once, and that was in June 2021 by one councillor.
I'm asking that. Yeah, well, I can, I speak for myself. I attended, although I were too late, I attended the Food Bank up in Fitzwilliam. But Ellen, you know, and I know, I do contribute to food banks as much as I can, and I will continue to do that. I don't, I can't speak for the other councillors. You're right, what you say, you know, councillors want to go and have a look, I mean, Hemsworth councillors, that's what you're saying, to visit the food banks, see how.
The food banks, we've got all these other community groups out there that are needing help and it's just nice for some councillors to get involved in them. It really would. You had that seaside trip, and I was here on that morning with the food bank doing the sandwiches, and people were saying where the councillor, there was not one councillor in this building on that morning, not one. And people were asking me, where's the councillor Ellen? No, somebody should have been here representing the council, and just even seeing my focus. It was a Saturday, you know, it wasn't a weekday, but most people were working for the Saturday.
Well, I can't speak for other councillors, Ellen, but I take them, you know, I'll make sure that I do, but I do, I do support them. I do support groups.
The councillors have got social media. Can you tell me why you're not sharing at the Food Bank on your social media page?
Because I guess I've not been at the Food Bank.
And I do share, actually.
It's probably not on my fence, like, it's, I was.
You know it's there, you know that I'm.
I'm not saying it's not there, Ellen, I'm saying.
You don't have to defend me, you, you don't have to defend me. There are lots of other groups.
If I see things, I tend to share them. What I'm saying is, the times I've not been working, so at the jubilee day, I spent all day here, running up and down tea's and coffees. The day after the, the day after down the park, I was down at the park all day there. That Saturday, I was working, I worked full time, I worked every single week. I do my best. I do my best to do stuff, I do try and share stuff, I do try and get out.
We've been doing meals here for the children through the school holidays, and there's been not one mention of that by any councillor or any, on council website or any social media, nothing. Now, some of you are the ones that are sending that message out to families, that there's three meals in this room that have been run in the shop by, no matter whether it's your group, my group or any other group. You have all done it in manifesto, you know, said clearly in manifesto, said, we want to be involved in community groups, we want to do this, we want to mark the community, you've got in and you've done nothing, because you're totally difficult at it and fighting and making fake profiles, that's what's wrong. And that's the say on it.
I'm not going to make one fake profile, I can assure you of that now.
Wait a minute, let's just do one, just, I'll, I'll get you in a minute. No, just a minute, I'll come to you, I'll come to you.
I'm not going to work for them. A year's long time of people coming in, in here and not putting anything on. When they're sharing some of the things like, the pop stars die, and there's a food bank in the wrong position that they represent, and they're not putting it on.
Helen, I can tell you that I have shared, I have shared on my Facebook. Yeah, but admittedly not on the council, but I have shared, everything you've put on them, and mostly I've put, I share, but like I said, I can't speak for other councillors. Obviously, we took it all on board, and I, and I get, I get what you're saying, Ellen.
Can I just defend Shaun in this, because obviously he has the key picture in Hemsworth group, and he does post a lot of the work that we do.
Would you go back and think that?
No, I'm, I'm.
Right, let's just, can we not, let's not get into a public argument. If you want to raise your point, raise the point, and then we can move on. Thank you for that, Ellen. Any more questions? Yes, can you put, say your name and we'll take an hour.
Hello.
Can we get another mic for the lady?
Hello. Yeah, can you, I'm here now. Yeah, I'm Linda Firth, I'm from Fitzwilliam, and this is the first time I've attended in person over, well, since she took power really. I just want to hop back to May, when, Jean, you told us about your priority for the year in the town meeting, and that was community groups. You said it because it's going to be a tough year. Can you tell me what your plans are now for the next seven months left of the year?
Well, what I can tell you is, any community group asks for funds from this council, we have obliged them.
Are you doing anything proactively?
Well, as you just heard Ellen, she's like, you know, we, we need to attend more community groups. I think she's made a good point, we do need to attend, we do, we do have jobs, we do have Facebook, you know, we could, at least if we work together, if we work together, we could get individual councillors to go to certain groups, but that's if we work together.
Jean, that was your priority back in May, when you were thinking that's your opinion, and you hoped the council would actually agree with you. People, eh?
Well, like I've just said, Linda, when any community group comes and they want any funds, we always oblige. And the facilities that we've got, we oblige free of charge.
Is the top priority of the council, community groups, not just yourself, Jean, the whole council?
Have we got anybody that can answer?
Because there's nothing in writing anywhere to say the council's priority this year are the community groups.
We have, we have the newsletter yet.
It's going out next month.
There's a newsletter coming out next month?
That's halfway through, yeah.
I'm not in control of that, Linda.
Who is?
Oh, Alan, the newsletter. It's just stated that it's coming out next month.
No, who's in control and how long?
It's going to be twice a year.
Did you hear that, Linda? Does it twice a year?
Well, I only saw one last year, and that was just after Christmas.
Well, it's just stated, Alice, you stated to.
So is that, that's not a council decision then, that's Alan's decision?
No, we have.
Two newsletters a year. But that's not written down anywhere either.
A newsletter lets you know everything that we're involved in and what we're going to do.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm not saying that doesn't, I'm saying the frequency of it, it's outside of the control of the council, that's what it's saying.
We're all here, we're all here.
Yeah.
We're putting it all together, and then it gets approved by.
Not the content, the frequency.
It's only once a year. Just twice a year.
It's twice a year. It's, we do two, but if the public want more, just let us know, we'll do more newsletters.
I think it might be helpful, and we said when we were requesting notice boards out of the villagers, that more communication will be better. We've not seen any notice boards, we've not seen any newsletters. But can, can we look at communication to make them a little bit stronger?
Yeah, as I've just said, if you want more newsletters, we have you.
Well, yeah, all right, let's go, we'll move on, Lyn.
Just to follow on from what Linda was saying, the gentleman that was here at a recent meeting from Friends of Fitzwilliam Station, they've been buying these sort of plastic display boards, he has a good supplier for them, and I think the smaller ones, about 150 quid, you could put quite a few of those up round the villages, that would be able to get the information, and it would give the community groups an opportunity to put their posters up advertising what they do as well. That's a suggestion, if you want a connection with Morris, I think Alan has got his details, so you could speak to him about that.
Yeah, and Alice, do we, we have notes in, in the youth centre, and what about Fitzwilliam?
And I've asked for permission to put on their land, but I've had a whole group of slides by yet.
We have to get permission for them, but, you know, we can look into that.
You could put one next to the book displays thing on in the West End. The other thing I was going to say was, if the council is struggling for expertise in writing newsletters and social media, you might have noticed, that's what I do for a job, so if you'd like some help, let me know.
I don't think we're struggling, Linda, because we do the newsletters, and we go to council for approval, and then we, we seek your help. Yeah, thank you, yes, thanks for that. Right, no questions?
Yeah, I'd like to address the clerk if I could. First of all, it just off similarity respect, I would like me to address it. Clerk, Mr Drake, hello, Alan.
Call me Alan.
Alan, all right then, Alan. First of all, we've heard here that other people have got other occupations, is it a clerk your primary operation, or do you have another occupation?
That's personal, it's nothing to do with the.
They're with you on five R T, it's.
No, I just, I'm not going to talk about staff, I'm sorry, Mr Conway, we're not going to do this. Right, have you got another thing that's relevant to the council?
Okay, this is relevant to the councillor. No problem, Alan, you're obviously qualified to be a clerk, yeah?
Yes.
Did you apply for the job?
Yes.
You got to submit a CV.
Application form, yeah.
Yeah, and in the CV, was there actually evidence of your qualifications to do the job?
Yes.
Right, so you actually feel you're quite capable of doing the job in advising the council?
I don't think it's, you're not going to question the clerk of the council, his qualifications.
I'm asking if he's qualified to do the job.
Yeah, he is.
He's got more qualifications than listed councillors.
We're going to move on, right, is there any more questions? Is there any more questions? Can you just be quiet, Mr Conway?
No.
You're not, you'll have to be quiet, we'll.
He's finishing his question.
Just to reassure you, Mr Conway, I appreciate the chair saying his personal stuff, I don't mind, I'm not going into great detail, but to reassure, reassure you and parishioners, I've been a town clerk for over 10 years, and four different town parish councils, and prior to that, I worked internal audit at three London boroughs. I've got the qualifications, I wouldn't normally be so pompous about all that, but you asked, so I've said. I'd prefer to strike that balance and give you some reassurance, but you'll appreciate, I don't want to give you my inside language or anything into very detail.
That's fair enough. My question is now, why was the special advisor appointed, and what qualification did they have?
On what subject is this?
Oh, I don't know, you are appointed, not ours.
On which, because the council always appoints advisors, all sorts of things.
Yeah, but what the special is?
Can we move progress?
No, you can't ask it.
Can you not get involved, going to move progress?
Can you show us any respect to Mr Kenyon or what?
If it affects the advisor, I mean, for example, we're currently doing the tender for the pathway in the park, I had to ask a builder for some help on that.
No, I think you know what I'm on about, because it's advisor.
Advisor or more, which subject?
Well, basically, we got told we were prepared to advise on the court case, upcoming court cases. Now, my point is, is advising on court cases.
We're not going to talk about upcoming court cases, what are you talking about? We're going to move progress, we're going to accept one more question, Dr Lay, do you want to ask a question? Yes, what's your name, love?
My name's Sue Dakers.
I can't hear you, can you?
My name's Sue Dakers, and I, just as one person, I know many people feel the same way.
Can you put it, I really can't hear, I'm sorry. Right, okay, that's better, yeah.
I want people to like some clarification, I know you've got the title of the town clerk, town chair, but why does Mr Kenyon keep putting in, why does he keep over speaking to you and giving you guidance? Because to me.
Excuse me, he's not giving me any guidance, he's just said move progress, and he's entitled to do that, he's entitled to do that. Okay, so we're going to move, move on, we're going to move on now. We're going to go to item five, recorded votes. As per minute number 262, to consider which items on the agenda will have recorded vote.
Madam Chair, Council Middleton's requested items nine, 10, 12 and 40.
Item six, town council leaders to approve the expected minutes of the council meeting on 14th of July. An extraordinary council meeting on the 4th of August 2022, can we have a move on? Item seven, committee and subcommittee meetings to adopt the minutes of the committee meetings and their respective subcommittees as far as, so we'll do them all together, which is leisure and recreation 21st of July 2022, finance 4th of August 2022, policy and planning 4th of August 2022. Item eight, accounts for payments, confirm the payments and accounts as approved at the finances committee meeting on 4th of August 2022. Item nine, stability and respect pledge, to consider a resolution to sign up to the stability and respect pledge in association with the N A, N A L C and the S L C C. Yeah.
Stability.
Yeah, so we're all in agreement to sign on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Item 10, Hemsworth Water Park, path res servicing consultation, further to minute number 47 2022, 23, to receive responses to the public consultation regarding the resurfacing of paths in Hemsworth Water Park.
Madam Chair, we've got four responses from the public, all of them positive, we're currently in the tender period to recommend the council base until the tender's been seen.
Yeah, we all agree with that.
What an emergency, what an emergency, Jack.
It's urgent, yeah, but we, it has to go out to consultation now.
Oh, yeah.
This is what councillors wanted.
So it's not, it has got to our consultation, but it's got to go out to tender, which is the same.
That's right, it's not going to be a quick fix, is it? Once we've got the tenders, he's got to go out to consultation.
No. No, the consultation started.
You know what, I owe one of your phones, one of your.
Right, can I, sorry, can you say that again?
The consultation started, and the tender is still live, roughly, it's about three weeks time.
Have you had any tenders in yet?
So, item 11, subject access requests to the town clerk to report an anonymized subject access request and to authorize the response accordingly.
Yes, but Chair, as it says, it's a press for receiving, and the council has advised to comply with it.
Yeah. Item 12, special motion, no confidence chairman, the short of standing order number nine, to consider a special motion of no confidence in the chairman received from council Dobson, Ardeker, Middleton, Baran and Westland, A Westland. So we've got six folks in no confidence.
All right, so, so, the way I believe this goes, we should be debating, and people may not know well, so it's not just the vote on numbers here, is that correct, Alan? Don't play open, open the debate, please.
Oh, you just asked for a, you asked for a special motion of no confidence.
As well, as reasons why not debate, as reasons why, and then have a role on it, I think that's how it, how it should go. A chair's, a chair's role is to encourage debate within, within a council. So you were saying, no, you have got six, you're just trying to close down the debate straight away there, so that's one reason.
I'm not trying to close down the debate, I'm just, you asked for a special motion of no confidence and a vote on it, and this is what we're doing.
Jean, can I just say, if that means that, I want to know what it's like, I want to understand why people have got no confidence.
No, it's not people, it's councillors.
This is, it is, yeah, it's six councillors.
Madam Chair, can I see to check, just to clarify the process, it's proposal, debate. So I'm trying to, proposal, debate, so I'm correct, yeah.
If you don't want to debate with us, that's fine, but I think, like our courtesy, you should listen to what we've got to say, because it's, it's for a reason, we can just do it because, you know, you think it's, it's not that high, which is fine, so.
Which is the last one you turn up. So, so, so can I, so can I continue it, please? So, we know this is always symbolic, we know it's symbolic, and I mean, it's absolutely nothing, we don't have to resign it, we totally understand that. So one of the reasons is, as somebody just mentioned about the council setting an agenda for the year, no agenda was set by the council for the year, at the parish meeting, you set your agenda, you didn't have a meeting with the councillors, or at least all the councillors. The council, the chair's role, when you read on the, on the Google Doc, Google websites, is to involve all councillors in debate and in decision making. You made that decision, you may have made it with other people, but not all councillors, you asked all councillors. Again, it's, you rightly, correctly, pull people to go for the chair, totally agree with you, except for a certain comment, dear Mike, as a rule, you tend not, they just tend to object when they want, especially again, as somebody else said today, special councillor Kenyon, he, this is our perception, and that's the thing, this is what we see. Another one, so again, and I think we discussed this earlier the other week, is that you are a business, you're a business person, and when you leave, you are your own business person, you have to run that business in an autocratic management way. It's your money, totally get it, that's what happens, it's your neck on the line. You seem to be trying to do the same with the council, this is not autocratic management, it should be democratic management, you just seem to make your decisions, and that's it, you win with it, and that's the end of it.
Can, can you name something?
Well, as I've just said earlier, so.
No, you just said they make decisions.
So, so, as I said earlier, so, so at the parish meeting, you said what your agenda was, not what council agenda, your agenda. You made that decision.
I don't think I mentioned an agenda, but.
Oh, your priorities, not priorities, sorry, your priorities.
No, I can't set an agenda.
You said your priorities are this, this and this. There was no, not even an email from the council saying, this is, this is what I, I want to push forward as a council, or, you know, I even about me, what we're doing, there was none of that, you, as, as I say, it may have been yourself and the group of councillors, you didn't ask all councillors. And the one that sort of really got us, to be fair, was, you made in explosion, I need to be careful what I say here, but you made some false claims about councillors, and I think you don't talk about, and I can speak to you privately about that, I can't mention it because it was talking in explosion, and I think, you know, because we sort of keep talking at the time. So that is why we have a vote of no confidence, or I haven't, and the people put their names on this list that vote of no confidence. I know yesterday you said all the six there, because you went to your council before the meeting, so you voted, blah, blah, blah. This was just six, because we don't even have to put six for a special motion, we didn't know you had, nobody knew it was one person, because we assumed it was Kenyon, so that's why there was only six names, I believe the councillor who spoke to wasn't even asked to put his name up, but I don't know. I, I didn't, I didn't. So as a councillor, that's why I would like to follow this motion of no confidence in the chair. Open up the floor, if anybody wants to discuss anything, if not, not at all.
I will.
So I'll propose it. Vote.
Yeah, the, yeah, what you said, well, right, so, so that's six.
Well, I'll, I'll propose a vote of confidence in chair, yeah. It's the same vote. It's the same vote.
Yes, Jeff's with us, he didn't, he abstained. He abstained because he didn't hear what, he didn't hear what he said. Regardless of what they're saying.
All right, Chair. Can I give my reason for this?
We just had vote to.
I can't say no.
No.
Why not? No, he didn't say it.
Going to item 30, so.
It's a councillor, they shouldn't.
What was your point?
Right, they don't get a chance, they don't get a chance.
I really, I really weren't going to, you know, say anything, but first of all, Shaun, I'll take on board what you said, it's not all one sided, and some of the things, the thing you said about the accusations, Alan's got emails, and I did show what I, what I said, I'm not going into detail, but I did show you on the special meeting, in explosion press and public, I showed you what I was talking about.
About friendship on the first.
No, no, I'm not going to talk about that, but, you know, I've been a chairman at council for three months, and my fellow councillors, they've got no confidence in me, but I won't be resigning, I got elected for four year, and I won't be resigning from council, I got elected to vote, to be chair for the next 12 months, and I won't be resigning that, I will decide whether I want to be a chairman or not, so, you know.
As I, as I said, we're not, it's symbolic.
So while I have been a councillor, a chairman, I have been doing things and emailing, I've been emailing as district councillors, councillor Jeffries, to discuss monies that are owed into parish and other issues, but unfortunately, I can't get them to come and sit round table, so much for working.
There's a reason councillor Jeffries can't, I know, she's good to be in. Jeffries, I do apologize.
Well, it were the response that I got, and I'm going on that response, so, and so far, and I have, so far as my experience as chairman, I feel like some fellow councillors engaging with public can make things up far worse than it could be. When councillors know that something's wrong, what, I'm not talking about all the public, I'm really not, some that come and they've got genuine values, but you, you don't correct them when they're getting on, you don't correct them, you don't say, no, that's, that's not right, because whatever, and I'm not going to go into detail about it.
I don't want to connect.
But you, but you do.
Jean, there was a post on Facebook left on, on the council page, left on for three days, total false claim, it was left on for three days, that being seen by council employees, and the council employees left it on.
Is it off now? Right, well, obviously, as you know about, it's been taken off, Alan's just said, so. So, like I just said, like I just said, you know, I think, and this, you had your opinion, you said what you feel, this is what I feel, I, I just think sometimes that the councillors inside. I, I just think sometimes that the councillors inside and encourage a rule of the egg with, with public, I really do. I just think.
Right, so that's an accusation, you're making an accusation.
Because we're just seeing it now, interfering, interfering, let them speak, let them speak. I, I do, I like to think that people. You see, this is what, this is what we get when we're trying to, you know. This is what, this is what, I'm not going to go through that anyway.
If you're doing your job properly, you shouldn't fear anything, you should, you know.
I'm not fearing anything.
Well, well, man, he's paid, man.
He has spoken. He had opportunity, we put it out to debate, so. Right, yeah, but, so we've just had a.
I didn't say resign, I said vote no confidence, so.
Yeah, we've just had a proposal that we're bringing back to next meeting. Yeah, and we, do we all agree with that?
No.
It's not, this is not a public, this is a council meeting, it's not for public. We've had us question time, we've had us question time.
He actually has a challenge question now.
We're just getting interference on public, so I'm just going to move to item 30. Exclusion of press and public, members of the public are pressed to be excluded from the consideration of business of confidential nature as per Public Bodies Admissions Act 1960. So, thank you for coming.